Good evening and welcome to the Larkspur. I'm echoing. Welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of February 13. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Chalmers.
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent and we have one vacancy.
Thank you. So to start, do we have any public comment on matters not on the agenda? Anyone in the room or anyone on Zoom? Don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom?
It's not active.
Oh, we're still not allowing that? Okay. Okay. Is there actually anyone on Zoom? Do we know?
Looks like two guests, two people. Okay.
All right, can we please have the planning directors' report?
Thank you. The planning or the city council is going to be appointing. There is expected to appoint a new planning commissioner on Wednesday, February 21st. And I wanted to also report that we did receive a new application for a 14-unit housing development at 1,000 Drake's Landing Road. It's one of the sites that's on the draft housing element list. It's a preliminary application submitted under SB 330, so they lock in the rules that are in place today. And they're also submitting it as a builder's remedy project, which has some advantages in that they're going to be providing 20% affordable housing, which is more than what they'd be required to provide for like really, really affordable units under the city's current inclusionary ordinance. And that, or that you'll hear more about how that plays out, I think, during the planning application process, but.
Does that mean it comes before the planning commission?
It'll still become before the planning commission and it may, the builder's remedy part of it may not be applicable until it comes before you for some type of decision. And if for some, if the city adopts a housing element and it's certified before that time, it may not be an issue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll open the public portion of our hearing tonight. The first item on the agenda is 96C Madrone Avenue in Larkspur. That's PLN 230007. If we could please have the staff report.
Yes, give me just a moment here to get my screen shared. Okay, so yes, good evening commissioners. The project before you tonight is PLN 230007 for 96C Madrone Avenue. This is the site. You can see it highlighted in yellow there on the left. The project proposes to demolish the existing home and construct a new 2,400 square foot, two-story single-family residence with an attached 484 square foot ADU. As designed, the project requires design review, a floor area exception, variances, which I will get into in just a moment. The removal of a heritage tree and a slope use permit. The requested variances include the elimination of covered parking, reduction of a side yard setback, and a final height of 42 feet and 1 inch where 30 feet is the maximum allowed by code. All of these requests are driven by the fire department's requirement to install a residential turnaround on site. The turnaround can't have any structures in it or on it, which is why they can't provide the carport roof, or a carport roof, I should say. It also requires that a support structure be installed within the setback right next to the ADU. And lastly, because of the location of the turnaround, which unfortunately is not coming through very well on the screen here. It's this white portion. It pushes the home a little bit deeper and more centrally onto the lot than the existing structure, which pushes it over a pretty steep portion of the lot, resulting in the height of 42 feet. So here is the floor plans. This is the lower floor plan on the left with the ADU shown by my cursor there. The upper floor plan is on the right. And then here are the elevations. There's the north elevation, which is the top one. That's the front of the home. And the south elevation, that's the rear of the home, as you would see it from Madrone Avenue below. And here are the east and west elevations. Again, the taller portion is towards the rear of the home. And then here are the proposed materials. It's stucco siding, a mix of stucco and wood siding and it's got a bit more of a modern architectural feel than some of the houses in the immediate vicinity, but it is a style that's become more common throughout the city in recent years. So we have received one public comment, which is a congregate letter of a few different neighbors. The addresses are listed there below. The letter regarded construction impacts to the shared private road used to access the project. Onyx Court is a private road. I think it also requested that construction and demolition activities use Madrone Avenue as the access point instead of Onyx Court. The only thing I will really note there is that Public Works won't allow the storage of construction equipment or materials on a public right-of-way, even under an encroachment permit. So while it might be something for them to explore, having the workers park along there, there are some limitations as to how far that that could be used as an access point. So finally, my recommendation is that the commission discuss the project and render a decision. There are, I think, four or three laid out in the staff report to approve, to deny without prejudice, or to continue to another meeting. So that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions and the project applicant is here as well. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Do we have the applicant to make a presentation? Or the architect?
Hi, Victoria Salvo. Thank you all. No real presentation. Kind of are, as Alex mentioned.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Yes. The, the essential premise for the design was driven by trying to accommodate the requirements of the fire department turnaround. And as Alex mentioned, that shifted the mass of the structure a little closer to, towards Madrone. It's a steep hillside, so obviously this created more of a looming mass effect. However, other driving factors in the design were the two cottages on the eastern side of the property and also the one residence on the, the western side, further down slope. And what we were trying to do there is accommodate on the eastern side, maintaining the views of Mount Tam for the, the small upper cottage. And then also for the downslope house on the western side, we were really sensitive to lighting issues. And because that house is accessed from Madrone, it's benched in and it's more of a stacked volume coming up their site, so it's, it's a lot lower on the site relative to where our massing is. So what we were trying to do there is keep the massing further up, kind of shrouded in the trees as opposed to stacking the volumes down and completely kind of eliminating their, their eastern view kind of vistas. Right now they're looking on to kind of like a wide open treeed lot. And so if we could kind of stay behind them, that was kind of our strategy there. So the trade-off there, well, and there's also a lower cottage on 96 on the eastern portion. So we didn't want to stack volumes coming down the hillside because essentially they'd be looking straight in. And so they'd lose a little bit of privacy there. So those were kind of our main strategies, maintaining views for eastern and also for the western neighbors to be able to continually not just have a kind of tunnel view towards Madrone after the, the construction, but more to know that there's a structure or new residence kind of behind them. So that was basically how we approached the, the design.
Thank you. All this consideration for the neighbors that you talked to, did you, you just talked about, did you discuss this with them?
Yes.
You did?
I did. The, the neighbors to the, to the west, I didn't. We, we made an overture. The house was being rented out about nine months ago, we did.
Okay.
But we did two, for the two cottages and also Nancy at the large residence behind. Oh, and also in terms of the massing, currently there's, it's basically three stories. And so we, we basically eliminated the, the upper floor, shifted the, the massing towards Madrone, so and compressed it down into the hillside. So it's become a two-story as opposed to its existing three-story. So. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Before we sit down.
Sure.
Do we have any questions for the, the applicant?
I, I have a couple of questions. So as the house cascades down the hill, do you end up with space underneath the bottom floor that's greater than seven feet?
We do.
So is that counted in the FAR?
It, it should be. I believe that the, the, that crawl space walls, yes, they're, they're definitely higher than. I think they're at 10 feet, to be honest. And we pointed those out to the neighbors on site visits. How, for example, those two cottages that I was just referring to on the eastern side, which are very small, they're probably, the upper one's probably 900 square feet. Both have the similar size crawl space underneath.
Because it doesn't show in the calculations of floor area that I could see anyway. It's, again, it's really, the plans are so tiny, I had my magnifying glass out, but I just wanted to know whether we're, what we're approving is really something bigger than what, what's stated.
Well, I, I thought that our sections kind of clearly show that there, that below the two floors, that what we would call the crawl space, the downslope side has a, would have walls at about 10 feet.
Alex, is this something we can confirm is that the numbers are correct in the plans that we're looking at?
I don't believe that, I think the only crawl space that was counted, to my knowledge, would have been the crawl space underneath the carport. I don't think I was aware that the.
Well, so so on the drawings, there are sections that, that show that from the existing driveway, the new residence, as opposed to walking in on that main level floor, you would walk down two feet. So that would be, that would be the upper floor. Then from there you'd go down, say, 12 feet to the main floor. Now, so those are the two floors that house all the living space. Now below that, there's going to be, I mean, the hillside's still dropping and the floors are level, so there's still going to be there's going to be a crawl space. We're not building on slab.
No, I got it. But, so what are your ceiling heights in the two floors? And again, it was really hard to see the sections of something this size, so.
Sure, sure. On the upper floor, basically we're working with 24 feet. So we have, we're figuring for the roof plane, one foot for the, the middle plane or the floor. We're figuring like a 16-inch floor and then probably 10 feet at the highest point on the upper floor and 12 foot, it's the highest point on the lower floor with the lowest point of that being eight feet towards the back of, of the back of the main floor. So there are some steps. It's, it's kind of split level.
Okay.
So can we clarify what the discrepancy actually is and if it's something we need to be?
So I think per the definition of floor area, the only crawl space area that would count against his floor area would be in the carport because it's actually got a floor to it and it's not just built on grade, if I'm understanding correctly.
Well, I mean, right now the, the carport is really a car court, so it's basically the, the, the large turnaround area. And then we have the, the main, the upper floor that's basically two feet below the grade of the current driveway.
Sure.
Okay, so.
This space right here.
Right there.
Is there a floor in it?
No.
Then it doesn't count as floor area.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm referring to it as crawl space. It's dirt.
Is that your understanding as well? So.
Whereas the current, the current structure there now, the existing structure is utilizing that space down there as, as basically a third floor, right? There are two, there's two upper floors and there's a, a partial lower floor, but that's not in this.
Yeah, I guess. You know, it, it could be that the house could get lowered two or three feet. I'll, I'll be honest, I don't think it would make any difference really, relative to who it affects and how it affects them. So my inclination would be that that's not a big deal, but I just want to be clear about, because it does come up with other people. And you know, if you have neighbors who are unhappy, it, it gets into that too. So a precedent is something I would.
Well, I want to make sure I understand this. So if it's more than seven feet, it's included in the FAR unless there's no floor and it's, this is on dirt and that's why it's not included in the FAR? Is this my understanding?
I think we're on the same page.
And in the past, that hasn't always been the case, just so you know. But that's, that's okay. I'm, I'm good with that.
Is there code that you can point to to confirm that or?
So the basement's crawl spaces and enclosed spaces with seven feet or greater ceiling height count, except those portions were more than half of the basement story height is below grade for the, than the, the greater definition of floor area. Let's see. It's the sum of horizontal area of each floor of an enclosed structure measured from the exterior faces of the wall. And then the horizontal area of interior spaces utilizing higher vaulted ceilings of more than 15 feet in height from floor to ceiling shall be double counted. And any additional, additional increment of seven feet clearance thereafter shall be measured as additional floor area.
I, I, I just think in the past, it's been counted.
Even on, on dirt?
It's always been sort of an issue and that's really more of a discussion maybe with, with us because it's on a steep hillside and.
That's kind of the, the nature of it. I know the last two houses we've built, one in Mill Valley and we're on similar slopes and two in Berkeley. Basically 29-degree slopes had similar lead-toe height underneath.
Yeah.
And how much square foot are we actually talking about here? Like, what's the discrepancy? That if we included it or didn't include it?
Yeah, I think it would depend on which portions. We'd probably need a bigger section drawing to show which portions are more than 50% above, above grade in order to see which ones would actually count. I will say that the definition of a story is that portion of a structure included between the upper surface of any floor and the upper service of, upper surface of the next floor above it. So it wouldn't count as a story.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out like, oh, is this really a blocker or is this something we can just move forward with and not worry about? That's what I'm trying to establish here, so.
Is it possible to move the lower wall, the, the support wall back in a way that you could? So basically you have a cantilever on the second floor, the lower floor.
So we, we did go through a lot of kind of structural gymnastics just to try to mitigate the the appearance of that facade in terms of its, its massing, which, you know, we excavated for, you know, patios and cantilevered certain areas and recessed other areas. So it's very positive negative and the ADU is kind of pulled out a little bit. I mean, that's a possibility. And I, I mean, what we've thought is another possibility too, is almost a lower mid-site retaining wall to, that we've done that before, say from zero to six feet, that can help create almost another volume that can offset that appearance of, of what you're describing. It, it's a little, and, and that would be easy for us to do because at that point, the highest point is really, in a way, it's an anomaly. It's one corner kind of falls away where there used to be this giant prickly pear. And we've kind of wanted to true that up anyways. So that is.
Yeah, to be honest, when I went out there, it just struck me as being really tall on the downhill. And if there was a way to mitigate that some way, so it just doesn't appear so, so big.
Sure. I, I think that. By the introduction of a, of a mid-slope retaining wall, that's really not that, that large at all. I mean, we're, we're not talking about anything like giant, but something that would almost taper to zero and probably be about six feet that would have foliage around it, I think would go a long way to, to upsetting that.
Right?
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, I think.
Satisfy the issue? Okay. Did you have further questions?
No, I, I liked the house.
Liam, do you have questions about this?
No.
No? I just had one question. I just want to make sure we address the, the concerns of the neighbors about the construction, whether it is accessed from Madrone or whether it's accessed from the court. And I think Alex did make a reference to this already, but if you could also.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. So we're, we do a lot of work on difficult hillsides and, and very sensitive neighborhoods.
This is a very challenging hillside.
Yeah, but it's, it's, in a way it's not. The, the hillside, yes, but this residence is at the end of an area. Our last project in Mill Valley, the neighbor sent a letter on our behalf, I think maybe yesterday or a couple of days ago. And in that particular project, which was probably about twice as large, it shared a 175-foot driveway. So we were very sensitive. First of all, we walked the driveway and we basically surveyed the driveway in the condition of the driveway, the shared driveway at the beginning of the project or before the project even started. And then, uh, over, and it was understood that without the neighbor's agreement, the, the access would never get shut down on that, on that driveway. And I would they were very happy over the course of construction with how we were able to maintain that and accommodate that. We never shut the driveway down over the course of a year and a half project. And I, I'll meet with the, the neighbors as well. And, and our project before that was on Maybeck Twin Drive in Berkeley, which is a very sensitive, that's where Bernard Maybeck lived, his ex-wife lived across the street. And maybe the, the kid lived in another house. That was a very tight, private neighborhood. And we did a large hillside house. We poured over 500, on that one, over 500 yards of concrete, a lot of concrete. We never had any issues. We take it very seriously. We only do one project at a time. And we're always there and I'm always there. So regarding, so in this particular case, it's a little easier because this house is at the end of Onyx Court and it already has an area that's that's good for, for staging construction. But the first part of the construction as shown in the construction management plan is to further create that car court. So that car court will be created first and it'll also be used for, you know, the concrete truck. The, so we will never shut down the street. It's just not even needed. And we won't park up there in terms of the crew. So they'll park either on Onyx or Downham Drone or nearby. Some of them carpool from Richmond. So and that's typically kind of what can muddy these construction areas. There are a lot of kind of worker trucks and cars like that. So, but this is a small enough, yet large enough project where we think we can easily stage it. And I'm comfortable walking the, the street with the neighbors and giving them two references of our last two projects and also agreeing if there are any issues with the roadway of repairing them. I don't, it's never happened to us and we've had more challenging sites, so, but, but I, I am definitely sensitive to the neighbors' sentiments on this.
Great. Thank you for your. Great. Thank you for your response on that.
And, and um, that was great, what you said. Um, it's uh, it's next to impossible to do it from a drone and
You can't run concrete hoses across the street.
It was sixty feet up to the, to the house.
Yeah.
Vertically.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to figure out something, but I think keeping the workmen's cars off that road, et cetera, um, is gonna work fine.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you. All right. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, do we have any comments on this project from anyone in the audience on Zoom? Actually, Zoom can't make comments, right? No one? Okay, in that case, we can um, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think I, I generally agree with what Brock was saying is it would, it would be nice to sort of break up that big mass on the downhill side. Um, you know, it, it is sort of a part of, I guess, building on a hillside. Is you're gonna have some bigger masses on the downhill side, but breaking it up as much as we can, I think would be appreciated. Um, in terms of the variances for the covered parking, the side yard setback and the, I guess the final height, but the, the parking and the, the parking deck. I think since, for me, it seems like since those are required by the fire department, sort of as a term of building on this property altogether, then um, I'm, I'm comfortable with those. And uh, the floor area ratio goes back to sort of our overarching discussion over the past couple of years since I joined the commission of uh, floor area ratios on a slope, you know, of, I think a five percent ratio gives us like a less than six hundred square foot house, which I don't think has been built in Larkspur in, in quite some time. So um, I'm also comfortable with that one. I mean, I think the house looks, the house looks nice. Breaking it up on the downhill side will make it look better and um, thank you for your comments also on addressing the neighbors' concerns. So.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Liam. Brock.
I, I can support uh, the project with what we discussed. Um, I think it's a nice house. It's gonna be really great for whoever ends up living there. I don't know whether you are or somebody else. So yes, I can support it too.
Yeah, but subject to the
Subject to, to what we discussed.
Thank you, Brock. And I, I concur with my fellow commissioners. Um, I can make uh, the findings for the various variances, subject to, I think what we need to do is provide maybe some specific guidance or is that sufficient enough to make a motion?
Uh, I guess my, my question would be, would you like uh, the provisions to be made and the item to come back to the board or would you like to just have the revisions be made and, and checked by staff that they follow your specific
I mean, in an ideal world, we would not have the applicant come back to the commission and delay any further. We would just have them checked by you, but I will defer to my commissioners, because if, if it's something that we do need to review.
I, I'm actually comfortable with staff reviewing it. Um, and if you feel it doesn't, you know, I, I think you get a sense for what we're trying to achieve, which is to, to at least give the sense of lowering that mass on that, that end. And um, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with that. So.
Right. And, and it, you need to contact, I guess, come back to us if there is an issue on that. Um, but I think if we can, if you can work with staff so that um, we can, you could both can come to something that works that, that would be, I think, probably preferable for you.
Yeah, and I have a good sense based on our conversation, conversation of how to approach it. And I think it'll go a long way to uh, helping mitigate that.
And something else I heard tonight is perhaps you can also provide maybe plans that could be read more easily. Sounds like it's just in, it's maybe they're too small, they're maybe lacking certain detail. Can you also communicate with the applicant about?
Sure, yeah, I can get, I think bigger section drawings is what we were, we were after. So, yeah.
So if you could also work on that, okay.
And, and I guess not as a condition, but I would, I would encourage you to, to speak with the neighbors and do a site walk of the driveway and all that stuff that you were talking about. So, yeah.
Agreed. Um, but we're not demanding that to be a condition, I guess, are we? I mean, I, or you, are you wanting that to be a condition or?
I, I think I'm okay with it, with, without a condition.
Okay.
You, you guys?
No, I don't think so. I, I felt he addressed it really well.
I was just, you know.
We can put that into the minutes. Um, all right. Do you want to make a motion that would include what needs to be done?
Okay, um, I would move approval of uh, ninety-six C, the drone. Um, A P, uh, O two, one, O eight, five, three, four, one. With uh, floor area exception, heritage tree removal and the variance, um, the variances as specified. In- including um, the mitigations that we discussed for the downhill uh, slope area.
Does that suffice, does that? Will you be able to listen to the recording and hear that? Or do you want more information than that?
I can probably gather it from the recording. If you want it hard and fast in the motion, you're more than welcome to add more detail.
Well, the mitigation with respect to which, um, breaking up the mass on the rear side.
I, we did, I did say
Say that, okay. And I wasn't listening.
But, but I think uh, a presentation to staff of, of what you're suggesting and, and they can uh, decide whether that's enough or not. Um. And then uh, also speaking with the neighbors, I suppose should be to, to work out the
Yeah.
Parking issues.
I think we agreed that maybe we didn't need that
Okay.
As a condition, but we would like to reference that in the minutes and just make a point that that would be, I think, very important to the neighbors. Um, I think you, hopefully you can hear that we're trying to work with you to make it as seamlessly as possible.
And I appreciate it. Um, what, what we'll do on our end is incorporate what we were just discussing. And three D model it. So we can all appreciate that. And we can even do a lower story hole that would reference. Uh, it would be more of a horizontal delineation of what that would be. Um, on the site.
Okay.
Can we come back and look at that?
Maybe we should have him come back then.
You've got a lot of working drawings to do anyway.
Yeah, you could continue to the next meeting. You could have Brock's name thrown into the motion that it will be reviewed by him with staff as sort of a faux subcommittee.
Is that permitted? Can we do that? Okay.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Okay, we can do that too. All right. And then we'll, we'll need a second.
I'll, I'll, I'll second that one.
Yes. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher's absent, so the motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Um, so moving, thank you. So moving on to our second item on the, on the agenda, it's uh, four oh two Alexander Avenue. Uh, P L N twenty-three forty-four. If we could please have the staff report.
Uh, yes, just a moment to share my screen again here. Okay, uh, yes. Good evening again, commissioners. The project before you is P L N twenty-three forty-four for four oh two Alexander Avenue. Uh, here's the site outlined in yellow and then a view of the rear from uh, Google Earth. The front is crowded with trees, so it's kind of hard to get a picture of it from, from that angle. Uh, the project proposes to add nine hundred and twenty-six square feet to the building with additions proposed to both sides of the structures that would total the nine hundred and twenty-six square feet. Uh, the project requests design review, a, and a setback variance to reduce the front yard setback, uh, which I will get into in a little bit later. And the removal of two heritage trees out front. Uh, here's the site plan. You can kind of see that, I can zoom in here. Uh, the front porch and the stairway are encroaching into the required setback, which is all the way up, up here, that the current home is, are in the setback. Um, the porch and stairways are allowed to encroach into a front yard up to six feet. Um, but in this case, I believe the total is fifteen feet and two inches. At the distance from the end of the stairway to the actual property line is, I think, eight and a half inches. So these are the floor plans. There is an, an A D U included in the lower uh, eastern wing addition. And then the uh, upper story is shown on the right there. And then here are the elevations of the home. It's the front and the rear. And the two sides. So the project does include one covered space and three off-street spaces. However, due to the width of the Alexander Avenue right-of-way, the spaces actually hang over the property line, as you can kind of see in, in that plan set there, that, that uh, plan photo there. Um, because of this, staff is recommending an additional condition of approval to reduce this noted planting area. There we go, right here, this planting area to allow for the required eighteen-foot depth for this stall, which would uh, put both of the required onsite parking spaces onsite. Uh, the two other spaces are technically their guest spaces and are allowed to be in the, the right-of-way. Uh, there have been two comments received by adjacent neighbors. The first uh, was requesting a couple of things. One, that the project arborist assessed impacts to the heritage tree on the shared property line between four oh two and four oh five Alexander. It's in this vicinity down here. Um, and they were also discussing a drainage easement that uh, runs from, I believe it's one oh eight Pepper through four oh two Alexander along the eastern side. Staff was able to confirm that there is an easement there. It's a five-foot uh, access and maintenance easement for a drainage line. There is uh, the, the, the space between the addition and, and and the easement is such that the project will have no, no impact on that, that easement. Uh, and also they wanted to discuss site cleanliness and security. Uh, four oh five Alexander, which is the home across the street, uh, submitted a comment regarding construction impacts, uh, privacy issues onsite or off, on-street parking during the construction process uh, and lighting. And um, to both of the, the site cleanliness comments, I, I will say that, uh, you know, the building inspector, when they are out there during construction, will enforce the certain minimum of, of site cleanliness. Um, and lighting is required as part of the conditions of approval to be down shielded and not shine into any neighbors' uh, yards. I think four oh five Alexander also had a comment about um, installation of a sidewalk, which is a condition of approval on the, the project as well. Uh, so staff is recommending that the commission approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval and a class one C Q exemption with that added condition about the planting area I mentioned earlier. I'm happy to answer any questions and the, the project architect is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Alex. Do we have any questions for staff?
Um, just out of curiosity, I've probably asked this before, but uh, wouldn't an A D U need an e- exterior access? I think.
It doesn't?
Current access is through the garage right now, but it could be, trying to pull up the plans here, sorry.
Kind of a strange.
Yeah. So we need to require an external access then?
It's sort of circuitously through the garage, at the end of the garage.
So that could be a condition of approval. I believe, I think there's actually, there's just windows. It's not a, not a door. So
It's not a door in the elevation anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And did you say that the sidewalk was a condition of, is, is an existing condition of approval?
Yeah, the public works department is requiring a sidewalk.
Okay. And then with respect to a comment on the um, traffic and construction, there is a, there's a construction maintenance or construction plan that's included here.
That would, that'll be concluded when it goes for the building permits.
Okay. Um, and then there was a, and I guess I could ask this as well, but I'm gonna ask it from you just for clarify just right now is I noticed in one of the comments from the neighbors that they were objecting to the F A R exception. And I just wanted to confirm that there is no F A R exception being requested here.
There is, yes, there is no F A R exception being requested. I, I did get a follow-up email from him that he had misread the notice.
Okay. And did I hear correctly that there is a drainage, there, there is something recorded showing a, a drain on site? But this project's not gonna have an impact?
Yes, so um, there was a little back and forth.
Okay.
The title report for this property doesn't mention it in the legal description, but the, the commenter of that letter was able to find the title report for uh, that, the Pepper Avenue address, which does show the, the language for an easement there. Um, the, the easement's five feet in width. Um, and I think the project is a little over uh, six feet at the closest point, which is like the back corner of the addition.
And I'm probably jumping ahead here. These are comments that maybe the applicant could also address as well, would they make their presentation. Um. Liam, did you have any questions for staff?
Uh, I, not for staff. I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off until we hear from the
Probably will. All right. Well, thank you, um, Alex. Uh, if we could, if the applicant's here to make a presentation.
Good evening. Um, excuse me. My name is Jared Polsky. I'm the architect. I'm here with my associate, Patrick Lapelch. Um, I think Alex's, you know, report was very thorough, appreciate it. And I'm happy to add more detail if necessary. Right, just so you know, this, the front property line is thirteen feet back of the roadway, the side, it's the sidewalk. So the whole house is in the, the whole front of the house is in the setback. And we think this improves the look of the house. It's a much better uh, stairway and, and that's why we're asking for this variance. Uh, as in terms of the A D U, we weren't clear, if this is a J A D U, you would have, you could have a, a, access from the house, but we, we thought of it as through the garage. But if a condition of approval requires a door on the side, perhaps to do that. Um, I, I don't really have any other comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
But you're submitting for a request for an A D U, right? So it sounds like you will need a, an exterior door if it's going to be an A D U.
I'm not sure that we would have the discretion to say that's not an exterior door. I don't know that, so we, the only reason, um, or if it's a, if it qualifies as a J D U, then I think that they, I thought they still had to have an exterior entrance as well. Um.
Well, some communities don't require it, but we're happy to put in a door.
Yeah, and it, and it might be possible that we can't say, we can't say no to the door that's through the garage.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add a door on the side here.
Do we have any questions for?
Uh, we had a comment, a public comment about the, the neighbor's tree and the arborist's report didn't address that tree. Is that something that you're willing to work with the neighbor on?
Of course. And we, we had an arborist to come out for the other trees and we're happy to have an arborist come out and opine about the, the foundation system that would avoid root damage.
Sure.
Right. Thank you.
I would assume you're just gonna do drill peers or pin piles or something on, on that side.
I'm assuming that.
Yeah.
You know, on the mushy side, on the, on the east side.
I mean, we may have questions from the audience that addresses the comments from the um, that we read in the report. The only other one that I'll just maybe, just since you're standing up already is um, it seems like the comments, there was a consistency on the general area and what it looked like. And in fact, when I went by there today, there was like a tarp and a tent and I mean, if maybe you could just address that.
Well, we, we heard the concerns and I will, will strongly relay them to the, to the builder and make sure that's a neat and c- uh, clean side.
All right. Thank you. Uh. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do we have any comments from anyone here in the audience? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Edelen. I'm at four oh eight Alexander, right next door, and I just want to say I appreciate the, you guys looking at both the the easement, addressing easement and the the tree. You know, the trunk of the tree is within ten feet of the story pole. And when we built, we had to go down thirty feet with piers there. And so I'm just, you know, I just, it's a very expensive tree to maintain. I just don't want to have to, you know, in three years, take the tree out to the two hundred fifty grand, something like that. So anything we can do upfront to get it, to get it dealt with is great. And then, you know, I would just say, you know, we're in support of people, you know, improving an asset. So but we would just appreciate, you know, the the one thing that wasn't clear to me is if the owner is the contractor. And so that's how what the report states. And so if that is the case, you know, we've been through it. We understand how long things can take and how there's, how think, how calendars can get stacked up. But but frankly, we have been a little frustrated with some of the trash and things like that. So if you guys could make that effort to 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 keep things tidy to the extent it's possible, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Should we get that question answered, if the owner's a contractor?
I, I have received no information saying the owner is a contractor. I'm, I don't know.
Is anyone here that can answer that question?
My name's Kevin, and my wife and I own four two Alexander. We've done many projects, and Katie and I are real estate investors, although this one we plan to keep. And we have a contractor of record that sometimes takes out the permits. And there's times where we take out the permits and we carry all the workman's comp. And he's kind of a one-man shop, and so it's easier for him to do it that way. So once we pull the permit, we're going to see which way we decide.
Okay. It it sounds to me tonight that if communicating with your neighbor may solve a lot of issues here. And he's obviously right behind you right now, so I think that would be very helpful. Anything else that we need to, we'd like to ask the owner? No. No, that's it. So my comments.
I think there was one public comment about the hedge. I believe it was on the east side of the property.
Oh, yeah, the size. There was a question about the size in the of a hedge that's going in.
Well, previously, before we bought it, there was a fence built. I don't know by who, but it's a wire fence that you can see through. So whatever the requirements are, if you want four-foot plants or five-foot plants or six-foot privets, that would be fine with us.
Okay.
I, I would think that that communication with the neighbor, the affected neighbor would probably be able to solve that without us requiring a certain height.
That was your comment, right? Yeah, okay, okay. And and I think we can probably stay out of that one, so.
Yeah, I, I like that.
All right. Any more questions for the owner?
I guess I just have a a general question, maybe not related to this project in particular, but looks like the stairs go all the way up to the property line. Is that? Is that typical for for entry or stairs to run up to the property line, or is that just because property line's sort of far back from the street?
Yeah, in this case, it is mostly because the architect mentioned the property line is quite far off to what you would think is the actual property standing in front of it. You know, there, oh, my microphone is not.
There are, you know, of course, requirements for the the length of the stairs for each stair, so they do mandate, you know, a certain length. And as I had mentioned, the code allows for porches and entry staircases to encroach to a certain extent. But given that it's going up a level, the length that the staircase needs to be in combination with that property line placement means that it's, it's got to go right up to the front property line. I don't think it's entirely common to be that far forward, but it is a common exception that a lot of people use.
And I suppose that since we're requiring sidewalks as a condition of approval, that the city has no plans of using that, you know, property up to the property line.
Not to my knowledge.
I also think that it's a lot more handsome entry than the side entry, which also.
Yes, that's, that's a fair point.
Yeah, and I think actually it's a really nice design, so I like it a lot. But but in terms of questions, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment? Nope. In that case, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do you want to go first this time, or?
No, I, I think they've done a nice job. And I can certainly support the the project, including the variance.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in the, I'm in the same boat. I can support the the variances and the tree removal. But I I would again encourage communication with your neighbor, because it seems like that is going to be helpful in sort of resolving problems as they arise or before they arise, so. I think we should stay out of it, but I I would strongly encourage that.
Jared, do you, you have a tree, an arborist that can look at that tree and make suggestions? Okay.
So from from my notes, there's two conditionals of approval that we should go put in. One is the parking, to move back the parking. The other one is the adding an external access to the ADU.
I think the third one is the arborist.
Yeah.
Report.
Okay.
For that, the tree at the property.
The heritage tree at four oh eight. And then I, I don't, I don't think we need to make, do anything regarding like the condition of the property when they're doing the construction, do we? No, I mean, it's just, it's just to have them work with the neighbor, right?
Yeah, I think, I think like Alex said, the the building official is going to enforce minimum standards, and I mean, I don't, I don't think that it's our place to tell people what their property should look like, you know.
Right. But it's been noted here tonight, so and I, you've heard it quite a, quite a few times. Okay.
Okay, I I move to approve four oh two Alexander Avenue, PLN twenty-three dash forty-four. With design review, a variance for the front yard setback and a heritage tree removal for the two honey locust trees with the conditions that the parking, two parking areas are fully on the property.
One.
Oh, sorry, one parking spot is fully on the property by decreasing the planting area. Exterior access is added for the ADU. And an arborist report is completed for the neighboring, the tree at the neighboring four oh eight Alexander.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Could we have a, a roll call for the vote? Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent, and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Oh, the ten-day appeal period we should announce.
We never. No, we didn't. I think I deferred that at least to always say.
There's a, there's a right for any member of the public to appeal a decision within ten calendar days.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on. Okay, item number C was to consider the draft ordinance modifying the text in the Larkspur Municipal Code Title eighteen zoning to implement state laws regarding housing and make a recommendation to city council. Just noticed that everyone left a room. I was going to recommend that we defer this to the next meeting, where we hopefully have five on the commission. And I, well, I personally have more time to review this, but I wanted to run this by the two of you.
I, I would be okay with that on on principle. Is there, are there any deadlines that we're trying to meet with this?
Let's do that. It would be nice to have at least four.
Yeah, and I did, I did check with staff that that there was no issue in in deferring this, so.
Yes, if you could continue it to February twenty-seventh, that's the next meeting, is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Great, thank you.
Do we need to move now?
I'll, I'll move to continue item C to the February, February twenty-eight seventh. Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
The motion carried. Thank you.
Just discussing the project right outside.
Good, that's what, that's what we, that's what we encouraged, right? Strong communication, communication between neighbors.
And then item number D is to make a recommendation to city council on the annual report on general plan and housing element. Do we have a staff report on this?
I'll just keep it brief. This is a report that the state requires to be submitted every year, and they would like the report to be reviewed by the planning commission before we submit it. And this year, the city approved the twenty-unit housing project at Magnolia Village. Now, building permit has been submitted for that project yet. But also, the city issued eighteen building permits for new accessory dwelling units, which is a large number for for the city of Larkspur. And as I noted in the report, the number of applications for accessory dwelling units continues to rise since the state modified the parking and size requirements to allow the the eight hundred square foot second units with four-foot side mirror setbacks. And I don't have a lot more to add. We, I attached the report that we have to submit to the state, and every year it gets more, they ask for more and more details on it. A lot of the pages, we don't have information to add. But it includes all the information on any permit that was either approved by planning, where building permits were issued, or when a project was completed, just for the last calendar year twenty twenty-three. So we're just recommending that you accept the report and recommend that the city council accept the report and direct staff to submit it to the state.
I just had one quick question. On the front page, where it says units by structure type, it said twenty five-plus units were entitled, so that's Magnolia.
Oh, it could have been, since I, the other five might have been ADUs that were.
No, no, it's a forty-four here. It says completed forty-four.
Oh, that was the Alisio project, the, that was the home, Project Home Key on South Alisio. So we get to count that towards this next cycle because it was under construction when the cycle started, which is.
Okay, so it's forty-four plus the twenty or?
Well, twenty was just the, twenty was just what we entitled. And there might be additional ADUs in there. I don't think they're counting ADUs anymore. And then permits were issued for eighteen. And then finals were issued for fifty-one units.
Got it. Okay, thank you. So any que, any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, is there anything in the pipe besides the North Magnolia project?
Pardon me?
Anything? What?
Oh, just the Drake's Landing.
Yeah, Drake's Landing, but any other nibble on?
Nothing, well, they, I think a lot of the people that are, some, a lot of people are waiting for the housing element to be adopted. To have their sites rezoned. So there, there's a number of the property owners at like Larkspur Landing and the Cost Plus Center that are regularly staying in touch with me, just waiting for their sites to be upzoned for housing. But we haven't received any, yeah, we haven't received any other projects.
I mean, the question I get, always get asked is.
What's happening with Lucky's?
Yeah. Do you have any?
Which one do you get asked?
The Lucky's location is one of the people, that one.
The racket club I get asked about.
You get asked, yeah, I get, I get Lucky's and.
Lucky's all the time.
You know, where the, the strip.
Yeah, nothing to report on on either of those. I haven't heard from the, the Albertson's representatives have gone silent since I spoke to them, when they said they were mulling over their options.
Okay. Has that lease expired?
I think Lucky's lease has expired.
At one point, they were waiting for it to expire.
End of summer or something.
Oh, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Last summer.
Yeah.
I mean, last April, yeah.
Control.
Okay. Thank you.
We didn't do anything?
We just asked questions and then make a motion to?
Yeah, it'd be nice if you could just make a motion that reflects that recommended action at the top.
No more questions, we can.
So what are we?
I think we just need to make a motion to to recommend it, right? Is that what you want? As drafted.
The draft ordinance?
No. Item, no, we, we're going to continue the ordinance.
Oh, that's right, we're confused, okay.
We're just going to make a recommendation. We're gonna, I guess, make, or you do.
You want me to make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we accept the report and recommend that the city council accept the report and direct staff to submit the report to the state governor's office of planning and research and the housing and community development.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
So that closes the public portion of the meeting tonight. They're still discussing. So on to the business items. We need to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Are we comfortable doing that? Or do we want to wait until the Jeff Swisher's here too? I think, do you have, you have, you're okay doing it?
Yeah.
I didn't have any, any comments on it, but.
I didn't either.
I don't know if Jeff wants to, wants to weigh in.
No, comments, the only, only I, I just wanted to note, like, the owner of Yang's is Gus, Gus McCovet, not McCoven. If you want to. It's a T and not an N at the end.
Okay.
And then the owner of the Hashidori Studio is Lori Emerson, L O R I. And I thought the the two ganatras who spoke were related, so maybe the last name might be the same. I could be wrong.
Boy, you were pretty thorough.
And.
I wasn't checking names, that's for sure.
Well, I just, I just had, I know some of these names. Do you need last names for these or?
If you have any that we missed. Our corrections, we're happy to take them.
Zach Glare, G L A R E, the page five. And then oh, and there's one question I had. Did this person really say we're happy that people are involved?
What page is that?
Page three. That was mainly thing, but yeah, that's it.
When is this coming? I guess I'll ask after the meeting. When is this housing element coming back to us?
We don't have a date yet, but I'm hoping to have, I'm hoping to bring it back soon as we can. But we still need to do refisions for the, in response to the state's letter.
Okay. Okay, so should we make a, a motion to approve this?
Sure.
Subject to corrections?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, planning commission meeting with the corrections that Natasha.
I'll second it.
Do we need to vote on that?
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, next item. Is the, any planning commissioners' reports?
Well, you probably all read that the library has been funded in this, off and running.
So what's the timeline on that?
It's, it's tight, is the timeline. Uh, I think, I think there's gonna be three or four months that they're getting it together and then, uh, designed by the end of the year. Construction has to be done by the end of twenty twenty-five, I think. So it's, it's pretty tight. And, and things could change, and it's got a long way to go.
Okay. Well, that's good news, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Should be good.
Well, my only report is I did attend the city council meeting where they were interviewing the planning commissioners. Well, applicants for the planning commission vacancy is probably more accurate. And I was good. Uh, there was, I, there's a couple of strong, um, candidates in there, I thought, but, um, so we'll see what the city council decides.
I watched.
Oh, you watched it too? You didn't though, no. Anything else? And, uh, next meeting is on the twenty-seventh?
That's correct.
Will we have another commissioner? So if, you said the meeting's gonna be on the twenty-first?
Yeah, we, we might be able to have them at that meeting if there's enough time. We don't have, I don't know if we'll have items. Like, we, we have to figure, we have this, we have this ordinance if it comes back, but, um, if there's, oh, you have, Jackie might have an item, yeah. Yeah, there's, um, we could have, if they have enough time to prepare, it, it's possible, they could, and they could make that meeting.
Okay, I was just curious, know if we'd, what would happen by then?
Yeah, we might be able to have a full.
And, uh, yeah, and then we'll look at the ordinance then.
Yeah.
Um, I've, we, we pushed that ordinance to the February twenty-seventh meeting.
Which is this one, that we just, I mean, the.
Yeah, but if, if there's nothing else, should we continue that to a date uncertain instead? So we don't have to come back just for the ordinance?
No, it's okay. Um, you don't have to come back just for the ordinance. We'll just, we just will cancel that meeting, but.
Okay, I wasn't.
If it's not to a date, then we have to republish it in the newspaper, so.
Gotcha. I wasn't sure if there was some.
Has to go to a future meeting, we have to publish it anyway, so, yeah, it'll be fine, thanks.
Cool.
It was funny reading about this in the paper before we ever had the meeting, you know? The planning commission is going to meet to discuss a house on Alexander and, um, it was in the IJ.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Usually it's after, you know, after you do it.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
What, what day of the IJ?
I can't remember.
Oh.
But, but quite a long time ago, last week, maybe?
What was the agenda out?
No.
That's probably where they picked it up, is my guess.
Must have been from the agenda. How would they know then?
Yeah, my guess is it was pub, it was probably published on our website and.
Yeah, maybe that's.
Oh, must have been.
Yeah. I, I just was surprised.
Yeah, okay, I'm. Um, anything else? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move with adjourned.
I will second that.
Um, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I.
Thank you.
Do we need to keep any of this?
Yeah, you're small, the small plans of that new house, in case you want to refer back to it with, when the change is made? You might. Oh, you could do, yeah.
Yeah.
We could try to get you a bigger section.
They're, they're unreadable.